Okay. Good afternoon, everybody. I'm T. Stripling, President of Solid Solutions Development. We know how busy everyone is. We want to thank you for taking the time to join our second live Zoom meeting. We're really, really, really excited to have this opportunity. With COVID-19 concerns, we need a way to keep everybody safe and informed. We made a pledge to Harrelson County to be open and transparent as we explore the feasibility of developing a solid waste landfill and light industrial park near Interstate 20. This is a long-term economic development plan that will bring hundreds of jobs and millions of dollars in host fee revenue to Harrelson County for decades. We realize this is not a typical economic development project that most people are familiar with. For that reason, it's important that we take the time to separate fact from fiction about modern solid waste landfill. Anytime during the Zoom meeting, you may click on the chat icon at the bottom of the page and type a question for us to answer. We're going to start by watching three video segments from our first Zoom meeting a couple of weeks ago. The first gives an overview of the project. The second section, my partner Ernest Kaufman, explains how we made the site selection in Harrelson County. The third video segment, landfill engineer and design expert Michael Stubbs from Hodges, Harbin, Newbury and Tribble, which is an environmental engineering firm in Macon, Georgia, who are playing the federal EPA and Georgia EPD requirements for safe municipal solid waste landfill. The videos will last about 17 minutes. When they're through, we'll answer questions. Let's go ahead and start. Solid Solutions Development, Ernest and I and our whole team, we put a lot of thought, time, effort and money into creating an environmental and economic development project that delivers real, long-term benefits to Harrelson County. This doesn't require the county to give up the tax money or spends millions of dollars to bring new jobs. We're not asking for tax abamments. We're not asking for stemming in utilities. We're providing the investment. Solid Solutions Development has the engineering expertise, the legal experience, the proven track record on solid waste projects to work with Harrelson County and make this an economic development project that you'll be proud of. It'll bring jobs and career opportunities for your children and benefit your community from Interstate Main Street. Really, I think the best way for us to start off this discussion, Ernest, would be trying to address some of the misinformation that is out there about our project. And maybe the best way for us to do that is is give you an opportunity to talk about aspects of aspects that our proposal will not contain.
Yeah, what we always see when we start a project, it doesn't matter if it's Texas or Wyoming or Georgia or Alabama. You see a lot of statements made by opposition groups of things that are absolutely just not even close to the facts. What we're not going to be, which I always like to start out telling people what we're not going to be. What we're not going to be is a hazardous waste landfill. What we're not going to be is a 2,700 acre landfill. What we're not going to be is a landfill that fronts on I-20. What we're not going to be is a landfill that accepts coal ash and sewage sludge. What we're not going to be is a landfill that accepts out-of-state waste. And we're not certainly not going to be a landfill that takes waste by rail. Now, what we are going to be is a traditional municipal solid waste landfill that will accept the kind of material that you put out on the curb in the afternoons or the mornings and restaurant waste and stuff coming out of offices. So it's not going to be this, you know, the stuff that that a lot of people have been told. We're not going to be coming off of Highway 78 or we're not going to be coming off north on 100. Actually, we'll be coming off approximately 400 yards after you get off the interstate on the Highway 100. So those are the things we're not going to be. And the rest of our conversations this afternoon are going to talk about how we're going to deal with that and the items that we we do take and things such as our host agreement and the site selection process and all. T?
Absolutely. It's it's so important that we talk about a little bit about the misinformation that's been spread about the project and we get an opportunity to tell folks the facts and and really, when we met with a lot of people in the community, Ernest, oftentimes we get a great question from them saying, well, why did y'all choose this site in Harrelson? You know, what what aspects of it are unique? And I think that really helps us tell tell some of the story about the project. So.
Probably notes us from separates us from other companies that are doing this kind of work is we don't really select the site. The site selects itself. Now, we look at, first off, what the environmental constraints are for the site. And we do an extensive laptop desktop study of what we call fatal flaws that would stop the project immediately. That's the most important piece of it. We look for pieces of property that are minimum 1,000 acres that can pass the fatal flaw aspect of it. And then if it has good transportation in and out, close to an interstate. As we said before, this one is approximately 400 to 500 yards off of the interstate. This site is a lot like the one that that we did in Meriwether County and the fact that it affords us the opportunity to do an industrial park that fronts on the interstate, which if you look at where most successful industrial parks are, they're they're very close or else fronting on the interstate. It allows us to take a large piece of property and to be able to set up a 300 acre footprint as best we can in the middle of it. Now, what that does, it 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 helps us to isolate the facility so that unless you're going to drive down the entrance road that's more than a mile long, you know, it's not going to be seen, heard, smelled, smelled and a lot of other things. And so it's really because of the topography of this land and all the different elevation changes, it hides itself. Because of the the topography of the land, it really dictated exactly where that footprint had to be. So people have said, well, you know, you're going to have a 300 acre footprint and you're going to expand it. Well, we're not having the host agreement application where we can't, we're not going to expand it beyond that 300 acres. And the additional feature about this site is that because of gas lines and utility lines and streams, this is where the site's going to be. You're not going to be able to expand it. You can't jump over a gas line or utility line and go, you know, continue the landfill. And so when people say, well, you just said it's 300 acres. Well, that's what it's going to be and not anymore. So the site is unique. It passed all of the tabletop environmental due diligence fatal flaw work that we did. And now we've probably spent the last six months going back and doing the actual on-the-ground fatal flaw work.
Right now, I think I'd like to try to introduce our landfill engineer, Michael Stubbs. Michael is president of landfill engineering firm Hodges, Harbin, Newbury and Tribble, which is based in Macon, Georgia. Hodges, Harbin, Newbury, Tribble is the preeminent landfill engineering firm east of Mississippi. There hasn't been a major landfill project done in the state of Georgia in the last 20 years. It hasn't involved HNT. Michael is a graduate of George Tech University. And I go ahead and like to introduce Mike. I'd like Michael to talk a little bit about the environmental aspects of the site. Go ahead, Michael.
All right. Hey, guys. Thanks, T. And Ernest. So like T. said, my name's Michael Stubbs. I'm a well, the president of Hodges, Harbin, Newbury and Tribble. This is about my 24th year here. Been involved in, I've actually never really counted them, but hundreds of landfills all over the country, primarily in the southeast and dozens just in the state of Georgia. One thing that a couple of things I want to talk to you just generally about, when you're talking about a landfill and and we do lots of them all over the country, is those things that the a modern-day landfill is designed to protect. And the first we'll talk about in any facility is the groundwater, the groundwater beneath the landfill. So the groundwater underneath everything. So you want to make sure that you protect that common. The the primary means of protection of that common is what we call a liner system. Now, engineers like myself or what we have to stand on is our reputation. And so because of that, I'm third party to this group. And so I get paid to take a look at the job and make independent decisions about how this site and this system would function as it relates to the protection of the environment. And so the first element that we're going to talk about is the protection of the groundwater. The groundwater, I think they're going to drop a section on here that's straight so I can look at it, is essentially you you spend lots and lots of time and money determining the location of the groundwater, how deep it is. And then any liner system that you place in a landfill is what we call a composite liner system. Number one, it's well above the groundwater. And we take measurements to make sure as the groundwater fluctuates that we know exactly the highest level it will ever be. And then we build a liner system above that. The liner system is what we call a composite liner system. Engineers by our very nature are redundant. We like multiple systems that aren't related to one another that provide redundancy in the protection of the environment. That's exactly what a liner system that you're looking at here in this sketchy is. It's made up of several components. First component is, and I'm going to work from bottom up, is obviously separation to groundwater. But the second is a clay liner. It's a very impermeable soil that is placed in very thin lifts, compacted and tested throughout the entire process to where it's very, very impermeable. Also, the landfill is drained to common collection points. On top of that, you have what we call intimate contact with an HDPE. It's a really, really thick piece of very high-density polyethylene plastic that is is manufactured for this purpose. It sits on top of the clay in intimate contact with it. And what that is designed to do is that part of the engineering analysis is if, and this is if you had water that stood on top of the liner, 12 inches tall, it would take 20, and there was a hole in the liner, it would take 20 years for that water to push, one drop to push through the bottom of the clay liner. And so you have a very redundant and protective system. Everything is sloped to a a common point. The liner is what we call construction quality assured all the way through by third parties. Everything is tested and then it's sloped to these collection points. In addition to that, we have a protective cover system that sits on top of the liner. That that's exactly what it sounds like. It protects the liner system. Its first job is to protect the liner system. It also is made up of a series of pipes and gravel that convey any liquid coming from the waste to these common collection points. And again, we're talking about waste that's underneath our sinks, each and every one of us. So that's the type of waste we're dealing with. And this water that comes through the landfill from the waste is collected along this liner system and is collected along the common, the collection point. The the real, it's really not hard math. It's really simple. Is if you don't want something to leak, you simply remove the water. And so the liner system is a barrier and a very effective barrier to prevent anything from leaking through the bottom, but we don't stop there. We simply remove the water from all the collection points. We have ways of measuring the liquid level on the bottom of the landfill. We do that literally every day at the pumps and we move the liquid off the bottom of the landfill so it can't build up what we call head or pressure on the liner system, even though the liner system is designed to handle it. So we simply remove that that wastewater. It's got a name. We call it leachate, but this wastewater is treated very much the same way as wastewater from when you flush your toilet home. It goes to the same wastewater treatment plants that are designed to treat that material. In addition, we also have outside the facility, we have groundwater detection wells that are designed to detect if anything ever did happen long before it gets very far from the footprint, if there is any indication that there may be a problem below ground. We call these groundwater detection wells. We sample those at least every six months. And then a third-party professional specializing in that material and that those analysis determines if anything's going on underneath the landfill. And the rate at which the facility, water flows underneath the facility is not, you know, somebody might think, well, it's like a garden hose running on concrete. No, it's, you know, maybe inches or feet a day of migration, not thousands of feet a day. So it's actually a very slow process, even if something did cause a problem. Not only do we protect the groundwater, we also protect what we call commons like vectors. The waste is covered every day when it's placed in there. So you won't have those vectors getting into the waste that that could cause a problem. And then we also collect the gas from the landfill as any of the organics may may decay. We collect the gas from that facility. That gas, once it becomes to a certain amount, which is pretty early in the history of the site, those that gas can be used for beneficial reuses, a gas-to-energy plant, something along those lines. So we're protecting the groundwater. We're protecting the common vectors that could potentially be attracted to a disposal facility by protecting the waste. We're collecting any gas and that is a protection of what we call the air or the air common. Therefore, the the facility is when it's closed up, we call that dry entombment. We essentially put the same liner system on top of the landfill that's on the bottom. And then we monitor that facility for a minimum of 30 years. As the waste continues to degrade, the facility will continue to be monitored, both groundwater and the air permit. So you have groundwater and air permits on the site. In addition, during the operation of the facility, it does rain. And so when it rains, any waste that contacts the disposal disturbed area, not the waste. If if water touches waste, it goes to the liner system and is treated as such. If water touches the area that's disturbed, the cover, it is routed to stormwater ponds. And those stormwater ponds are the minimum, the design from the state is required before a 25-year storm. We design our ponds because it's environmentally beneficial to essentially be well overdesigned to where not only do they pass the 100-year storm, they will pass the 100-year back-to-back storm. So significant overdesign, redundancy in the placement of both the liner system, the stormwater ponds and the air protection system and the and the gas systems. As and like I said, I've been involved in many, many landfills over the years. And Ernest alluded to it early. The site generally selects itself. There are dozens of things we look at as selection of a site. And this site has everything that's needed for a safe, environmentally protective disposal facility. The soils are there. It is actually really unique to have a facility this close to major transportation routes that doesn't go through any, I mean, you come right off the interstate and ride into this facility. This is the best one I've ever seen, being so closely located to a major thoroughfare. And once you get off that major thoroughfare, you're right into a very long access road. And then the site is is really just kind of tucked in or nestled in between the topography that further makes it extremely unique in the way a facility is usually cited. It's really a lot of advantages to this particular location. The last thing I'll sum up with is I touched on a few of the commons, but we also look at a lot of other studies. These things include floodplain studies. So to make sure that when it does rain and banks and rivers and creeks and streams get out of their banks, that we're not going to impact floodplains. We study things like cultural resources. We want to make sure we're stewards of our cultural heritage. We study things like wetlands and streams and threatening endangered species. We also look at more social things such as environmental justice issues. There are probably a few more that I might be missing, but for the most, oh, we also look at odor, traffic control and noise. Those are some that are generally associated with industrial facilities that we all look at. All those studies have have been prepared. And like I said earlier, this is just a really good site based on its location. It has all the the things that are needed for safe operation of a landfill. They're all right there in the facility. And with that, I'll want to turn it back over to T. And Ernest. Thank you for the time.
Okay, well, really great. We got an opportunity to show some short videos from our first presentation. I think that gave everybody a good overview of how that went. I want to thank everybody for sending in some questions. It looks like we were getting a few already. We really want to be respectful of everyone's time and keep the Zoom meeting to one hour. So let's go ahead and get started here. One, one question that we're asked is whether coal ash or sewage sludge won't be allowed in the landfill. And Ernest, I think I'd love for you to speak to that question here initially.
Thank you, T. You know, the unique, I guess, thing that we did from the very, very start of this, when we started talking about host agreement and permitting, is we said from the very beginning that we were not going to accept coal ash and we were not going to accept sewage sludge. Now, people keep bringing up stuff on the internet and all that talks about us going to bring in coal ash or it's going to change or somebody can change it. We're going to have it in the host agreement. We're going to have it in the permit. Our lawyers are working on a third step that will definitely prevent it for 20 years. Unfortunately, we can't prevent it past that 20-year mark. But with that said, we've gone a step further and looked at Georgia Power's power plants and what their coal ash ponds closure schedule is. All the facilities that are in 50 miles of this site, the power facilities within 50 miles of this site will be closed and ash transferred or or buried on site before we even open. Now, we're going even a further step. And we're looking at plants that are in South Georgia, outside of 50-mile range. Most of those will be closed prior to this opening. There are five plants that are generally in South Georgia that they don't have a defined date yet, but it would not be feasible. It would not be making any sense for them to haul it a great distance up to this facility. Lastly, there was a question asked this week about the county having to pay for pretreatment of our leachate. When this facility opens, the county pays for for nothing other than the tip fee to bring waste in. If we, when we upgrade and start pre-treating, that's our responsibility. We have to come out of pocket for that. You know, we do not ask the county to give us any exemption from anything. Lastly, about the slope failure videos that were put out. Those were caused by oversaturation of the working slope. Again, if you don't take sludge and you don't take coal ash, you don't have those problems. And, you know, we are making every effort to make sure that will never, for as long as we can, those two subjects or those two materials come into this facility. T?
Yeah, absolutely, Ernest. I mean, it's really, really important to know that if you don't accept those types of waste, you won't have those issues. And I'm really glad you had a chance to go through that because we've been, we've been way out in front on this issue. We made it clear from the beginning, we're not going to accept coal ash and we're not going to accept sewage sludge. That's not a part of this project. It'll be ordinary household MSW waste. Okay, before we get to some more questions, I just want to set some ground rules. While we may not all agree on every point, I think we can all agree that we should be respectful of each other and listen. That's the best way to make decisions for the county. If someone chooses not to follow these guidelines, then we're going to have to mute them on the meeting. So and then there's one more thing I'd like to add to. We are recording the Zoom call, so I just want to make sure everybody is aware of that. So let's go ahead and answer some of these questions here. Phil, maybe if you could go ahead and read some of them.
Sure. T., T., we got, one of the first questions came up while the video was playing about how the landfill is built. And Scott was asking, how is the gas collected? I think that'd be talking about the the methane gas from the landfill. Maybe that's a Michael Stubbs question.
Yeah, I think so. Michael, could you please answer that for us?
Be glad to, T. So the the gas is collected. What happens is the gas is a positive pressure situation. It's producing gas in the landfill. So simply, the way you do it is you create a negative pressure in the facility. On average, you're going to drill a gas well about every acre of landfill, maybe every three-quarters of an acre and in any areas that seem to be just generating more. So essentially, it's straws in the landfill that are hooked to a blower that creates a negative pressure. The gas is sucked to a flare facility or a beneficial gas-to-energy facility. And then any common points where gas tends to collect, maybe in the leachate collection lines, we always tie those in. So it's a, it's a network of of gas wells and collection systems all plumbed to redundant blower flare and gas-to-energy system.
Okay. Another question that came in, I was asking, I think Ernest is talking about the landfill footprint. And it says, you're very clear that you will not expand the 300-acre site. Will you add a second site within your acreage? Let me see. T., are you there?
Hey, hey, Phil. It's Michael. Can you, do you have me?
I can hear you, Michael. Do you want to answer that question? Are you capable of talking about that?
I'll be glad to. So just from a geometry standpoint, the facility, it makes absolutely no sense to make a separate landfill within that footprint. I'm certain T. and Ernest would say the same thing, that the maximum acreage acreage ever for the landfill footprint would be 300 acres. And the question, why I completely understand it geometrically, it makes no sense. A landfill facility footprint, you're going to make it as small as you possibly can so that your systems are all contained in in one unit or in one 300-acre area or less. So there won't be a second, a second mound or second landfill footprint within that property.
Okay. Not sure if we've got T. and Ernest back yet or not. Maybe they're having some technical difficulties on that side. Michael, I'm not sure if you're capable of handling this. It says, you told us the same thing in Meriwether and you published your promises in a local paper, but you did not keep those promises. I think maybe that's referring about coal ash or something along those lines. Maybe it's what they're talking about there.
I'm, I'll have to let Ernest and T. answer that one. I'm not, I'm not really familiar with that particular situation, but I, and Phil, I'll answer as many as I can.
No, I understand. Understand.
Sure they're trying to get back in.
Everybody, let's just hang in there just a minute. Let's see if we can get T. and Ernest back connected here so they can do the the bulk of the answering here. If you'll just bear with us just for a moment, please. Michael, maybe you can answer this one. This is maybe a little bit more of a technical question. It says, what will you do to prevent a collapse like what happened at the Pine Bluff landfill in Ball Ground?
So the, I'm going to assume the Pine Bluff issue you're referring to is actually it's not a collapse. It was a slope stability event where the slope moved, the the waste mass moved, predominantly related to pull pressures within the landfill that were, I believe, linked back to a couple of different, different items. So to to address any slope stability consideration on any landfill, you do the same thing. Some of your problematic waste streams that if not properly managed, that can contribute to slope stability are things like sewage sludges, which I believe we've spoken to or the group spoken to earlier. So those waste streams that if not properly managed, could contribute to that. Sewage sludge being one of the primary ones at this facility will not be allowed. As also as part of a matter of engineering design, you have experts that perform slope stability analysis as part of the landfill initial design. But with some of the slope stability events occurring in the design and operation plan, we're going to continue to play slope stability analysis over the life of the facility. When you have a slope stability event, almost exclusively, it's related to water in the landfill that's not able to get out. And so by the very nature of MSW waste, it's inherently strong. And by making sure that we don't have lenses of sludges that could prevent liquid from going down to the collection system and maintaining a third-party engineer to come in every, at a planned interval to monitor for any, any movements within the landfill that are unexpected, you can eliminate the potential of slope stability events.
Okay. And in your experience with other landfills, is this a common occurrence or uncommon occurrence?
As it relates to stability events, very uncommon. You, it has to have multiple things happening at once to have stability problems. They tend to make the news a lot because they're they're actually relatively, they don't happen much. So but when they do happen, they obviously are big news. So then MSW waste is just inherently strong. When when you place it, it needs to gather the the materials in there. They they are really strong. You can actually do a lot with MSW waste when you pack it really tight. So as a whole, you don't normally deal with a lot of stability. So, as a whole, you don't normally deal with a lot of stability events. You've just had to deal with a few lately and some common, common themes there with how those, what causes those stability events.
Yeah. And I think, again, Michael, just we've got a little bit of time. We're trying to get those other folks hooked up. But the, the waste is brought in each day. It's compacted. They put cover material on top of it, soil on top of that. And any liquid that drains off of that is collected in the leachate collection system. And then that is drawn off and then it's treated, something like what you have, like water in a sewer for a municipal sewer system, correct?
Correct. The waste comes in every day. It is compacted with special equipment that literally bind the material together. It's, we, they're 836 type machines, really heavy, but they also have teeth on the wheels that compact and knead the material together. And you create the waste. You do cover every day. But when you continue to construct your landfill, you continue to create that downward migration of liquid. Your permits that, that the facility has to operate does not allow any liquid outside the landfill. If liquid touches waste, it's called leachate. And by actually multiple permits, it has to be, go down through the landfill and collect it through the leachate collection system. It is not allowed by your stormwater permits, your solid waste permits to extend outside the landfill footprint and get into surface water.
Okay. We, we've got a number of other questions that have come in. They're really all talking about, they're asking questions about Meriwether County and also what happens with the next owner or an owner out in the future of a landfill. But I think we need to wait till Ernest and T are back on to answer those.
Phil, we're back on.
Okay. All right. Good. All right. Ernest, let me roll back then to one of the questions here. Michael did an excellent job talking about some of the technical things.
We're very sorry, but our internet dropped us all for some reason. But anyway, we're back.
Okay. One of the things, the question was, it said, you, Ernest, were very clear that you will not expand the 300 acre site. Will you add a second site within your acreage? Michael talked about that while you were away, saying that that acreage doesn't really lend itself to another area inside there. I don't know if you want to comment about building a second landfill.
There's not going to be a second landfill on that side. If you look at the photography, you look at the streams and all the other, you know, you look at Tally Mountain and all the ridges and all. It's, it's, the landfill is where the land totalists that need to be, and that'll be the only one on that site.
Okay. Another question came in, Ernest. This is probably for you to tackle. It says, you told us, I think they're talking about you, Ernest, told us the same thing in Meriwether and you published your promises in a local paper, but you did not keep those promises. I'm guessing maybe they're talking about the promises about coal ash or something along those lines.
Well, Phil, I don't know any promises that we did not keep. And if anyone has a promise that was published in a paper that we did not keep, I'd be very interested in seeing that. Now, the opposition group has tried and has done a pretty good job of confusing people, saying that Meriwether County took coal ash. Meriwether County took coal ash for about two months, okay? Coal ash was not a prohibited waste stream in that facility. When that facility's host agreement was negotiated and permits and all were applied for, nobody in the furthest imagination ever thought that you would see coal ash leaving the utility companies own ponds there on site. It just, nobody imagined that. And then all of a sudden, the TVA coal ash bill happened in Kingston. EPA took over the project and EPA designated Perry County as a facility that should receive that coal ash, mainly because of the fact that you've got, have 400 acres of white chalk underneath you down there was extremely imperturbable, much long before your liners. And even after that, people did not want to think about coal ash ever getting out of utilities. Now, we had a meeting with Duke Energy about the facility in Perry County. And the CEO of Duke Energy sat there and said in that meeting, well, we're Duke Energy and we don't have the kind of problems TVA has. Well, within two and a half years, guess who the failures started with? Duke Energy. Nobody had a clue that all these coal ash ponds were going to start failing, but they did. Now, thank goodness here, we've said from the beginning, we're not taking those two items. But Meriwether County never had coal ash as a prohibited waste stream. Now, as far as not keeping promises, I welcome anybody to tell me what that might be.
Okay. All right. Let's see. It says, here's a question. It just says, why is the site in Meriwether County allowing untreated waste to flow into water treatment facilities in Troup County?
They are not allowing untreated waste. Troup County takes the leachate from the facility. At, at some point in a lifetime of a landfill, and they always vary, you will, because of the strength of the leachate, at some point in time in the future, you always end up having to convert to a pre-treatment facility. Okay? And so, right now, it's my understanding that waste management is to the point that they're starting to get ready to build and implement the pre-treatment facility. But there's not any untreated waste. It's, it's the leachate. And they, Troup County is a qualified by EPD to their wastewater treatment plan to accept that kind of waste. And so, key thing, it's like we said before earlier, we'll be pre-treating the waste at the appropriate time.
Okay. Ernest, here's another question that came in. It says, when you sell the landfill, once it's built, and the next owner will get the special permit to dump coal ash. This has been done many times by this company. This is your MO.
No, wrong again. The only facility that we, that we have, that we have permitted that took coal ash was Meriwether County. And again, that's because it was not a prohibited waste in the permit or the host agreement. When somebody buys this facility, all the agreements that we make, the host agreement, the permit, all of it. And if we deed restrict property, they cannot change those things, especially since we're going to be deed restricting the property. And so, that's the difference in facilities that don't have host agreements and those that do. We can control that. And then after 20 years, first off, there's not going to be any more coal-fired plants that we know of. Most of the ones are being closed and converted to gasification plants. And so, you know, you have several reasons why coal ash isn't going to come to this facility. Beyond us just restricting it.
All right. That kind of dovetails nicely into another question that came in. It says, how is the host agreement negotiated and followed?
Well, what we like to do is we'll put out what we call our, what we think is our basic host agreement. Now, each community we do this in has different ideas about what they may or may not want help with. Those things are, you know, we listen to community groups. When we have meetings with different people in the community, we listen to what they have to say. We listen to the commissioners, elected officials, city council mayors. And they will generally bring up a number of things that they would like, you know, help with. Recreational activities, sometimes a building of a facility that they need help with. And all those things are, you know, we take into consideration. And then we put that in a final host agreement that's adopted as part of the zoning, zoning that we do. Each community is different in what their needs are for a host agreement. So, you know, we're going to have the basic things in there about how much money the city is going to get and how much money the counties are going to get. We're going to have free disposal for residents on the weekends. We'll have household hazard disposal days twice a year. We'll have countywide cleanup days twice a year. A lot of those kinds of things. We'll have educational classes for fifth grades that'll be brought out to the landfill and we'll teach recycling and disposal, educational classes while we need to recycle when we can.
Okay. All right. One question that came in. It says, T alluded during this Zoom call to hundreds of jobs coming due to the landfill. What kinds of jobs will these be? And I think that those jobs really are more affiliated with the light industrial park. But I don't know if T is there if he wants to answer that or you want to take that, Ernest?
There's not going to be hundreds of jobs brought in by the landfill. There'll be somewhere between 20 and 27 jobs. Then you'll have a lot of outside contractors that'll be working for us. It's not counted in that 27, which will be doing landscaping, welding, fence building, all kinds of things. But where we're referring to is the actual industrial park itself. Meriwether County, now right there, county that really, and just, you know, a big announcement was a Dollar General. They didn't have anything like what the industrial base is up here already in, in Tala Poston in the county. But what we're alluding to, what he was talking about, is that generally, by the time we get the industrial park up and going, within five years or so, we should have somewhere near a thousand jobs working in there for light manufacturing. But no, we're not talking about hundreds of jobs being used for the landfill. No.
Okay. Question. Another question, Ernest, that came in and is talking about the host agreement again. And it says, but whom do you negotiate the host agreement with? And what is the community's recourse if the host agreement is not honored?
Well, the community's recourse, obviously, it's going to be a signed contract and be part of the zoning and every, you know, everything else that we have applied to with the county. And the county has legal recourse or all the citizens have legal recourse, unfortunately. We're not going to do anything, I can promise you, after spending seven years and probably 25 to 30 million dollars getting this done, we're not going to do anything stupid like, you know, violating the host agreement. Those are important documents and those are important documents that we sort of started this whole trend of having host agreements because we really believe in them. We want to make sure that when we're gone, if we go, that that facility operates just as we promised. Because, you know, this company is going to continue to do facilities. We're not a one-off company that's going to go do this and get a bunch of money and walk away. If you look, we've done these facilities all over the United States. I have. And so, you don't keep a good reputation if you don't do what you say you're going to do. Now, a lot of, again, opposition groups like to pick and choose and put horror stories out, horror stories out there. There was one this week they put out there, for instance, that had me quoting as if they were talking about Meriwether County, that we'd love to have a bunch more coal ash. We'd be fortunate to have it. What they did is they clipped a piece that was in Perry County after we bought that facility long bef, you know, had nothing to do with Meriwether County. But the opposition, again, you need to research. When you hear these kind of things, look behind it. Figure out if it's really real or not, or somebody's misinformed and trying to, you know, just disrupt the process.
Here's a couple more that have come in. Let's see. How many landfills have you sold in the last decade? And of those that you have sold is now accepting coal ash?
Uh, the actual that right now would be zero. And if you want to say which of those did accept coal ash, okay, there would be the one in Meriwether County. Now, Perry County accepted coal ash before we bought it. It was already there. We did not accept any coal ash in Perry County when we owned it.
And just so people are clear, Perry County is in Alabama. The Meriwether site is in Georgia.
Meriwether is in Georgia. Perry County is a little bit south of Selma. Very, very, very remote site.
Okay. Here's another question that came in. It says, what will be the maximum tonnage allowed per day at the landfill?
Well, T, I mean, Phil, the, you know, we'll start out, the first year will probably be about 750 tons a day. Then you'll ramp up the next year, maybe 1,200 or 1,500 tons a day. And then by year five, when you talk about a stabilization year, then you'll probably be, you know, around 3,000 to 4,000 tons a day.
Okay.
Which would be 12 years, 12 years from now.
Okay. One other question came in. It says, what will be the maximum tonnage per day? I think you just talked about that. And they said, so about 167 trucks a day. I think you'd have to do that math to verify that.
We'll be glad to get back and verify that and put it back out on the website.
Okay, about
In fact, we'll actually put our schedule, what we anticipate the waste coming in will be versus, and along with a number of trucks. We'll put that on the website.
Okay. A question came in. It says, have you done a traffic study at your other facilities? Don't most trucks arrive early in the morning and mid-afternoon and not spread out evenly over the 12 hours of operation?
No, that's not generally true. Now, you're going to have, the transfer stations will be loading all night, okay? In other words, in Atlanta or Marietta, wherever it's going to come out of, you'll have, when the landfill opens, you'll probably have a little bit of a push then. But the rest of the day is going to be pretty much leveled out because you're coming out of transfer stations. You're not, you know, you're not having direct haul in there. Back when you could have direct haul landfills in Atlanta, then yeah, you'd have a huge push as soon as you open, trying to empty the transfer station. You'd have another big push around 11 and then you'd have another big push around 3. But this isn't a direct haul landfill, so it gives you the ability to, to, to spread those loads out. The nice thing about this facility again is you're 400 yards and you're getting off of a, of a public road. And a lot of people in the old days, you know, they built the entrance right, right at the highway. And so, trucks that would get there early were sitting there idling out and blocking up one lane of the road for an hour or more. Well, now, you know, that's not the case. You look at Meriwether, you look here. You know, we're building entrance roads that's over a mile long. And so, the trucks can stack there away from the public roads, away from, from the public as far as housing and all. So, it's a much different situation in the way we try and do things. Again, that's one of the reasons why we buy, you know, 2,000 acres of land so that we can do those kind of things instead of trying to push everything into a corner, reminds me.
Okay. Well, I've given you all the written questions we have here, Ernest. I don't know if you're interested in just opening it up and if people can only send, give a voice question. If they want to do that, we can do that. Joel, maybe you make that happen. I'll be quiet for a minute. We'll see if folks have something to say. And again, just kind of take your time, one at a time, please.
And Phil, I want to apologize to everybody about our internet dropping us. That's just not acceptable. And we apologize for that.
One, one other question that came in, Ernest. It says, what happens if a non-favorable vote is delivered by the commission? And it says, what was the process in Meriwether County?
Well, in Meriwether County, we went to court. They miraculously found some document that had been in a basement that they didn't know about and used that as, as a reason. And so, we had to go to court. And we, we won that lawsuit. Hopefully, we don't have that here, Phil. I think when people see the economic impact analysis is being done and when people hear the real story of what this facility is and how it's being designed, hopefully, we don't have to go to court. We don't want to go to court with communities. We would rather be their partner. And to do that, you have to be able to sit down and communicate with people. So that everybody has a part of the process and Phil's a part of it.
One, one other question that came in, Ernest. I'm sorry. It says, what kind of impact do you see this having on the existing infrastructure around exit 5? And will Solid Solutions make any contributions to fix road issues or damage as they arise? Or will the county be 100% responsible for that?
Well, as you know, the county is not responsible for interstate highways, so the county is never going to be responsible for that. You know, if we have a turn lane that's, that has to be repaired, then yeah, that's, that's something I'm sure we'd be stepping up their plate for. And obviously, we've got to maintain a mile and a half of entrance road.
All right. Well, it sounds like some people have some questions they want to just ask live, so I'll be quiet. And if you have a question, one at a time, go ahead, folks.
Have a rough day?
Yes. Somebody came up on the picture and didn't say anything. Phil, you have somebody?
Uh, no, nobody here. I do, one more. I do, one more question did come in, a written question. It says, how many landfills have you completed and once in operation have you sold?
Well, you know, our oil and gas waste facility, we did a really big oil and gas waste facility out in Wyoming. We operated it for two years and then one of the big waste companies came in and, and they wanted it and we sold it. The Perry County facility, which we bought, we didn't permit, you know, that, that was sold after I left the company. Meriwether County was sold, which we told everybody when we permitted these, that we may or may not operate them. If we need to operate them, we will. If one of the big companies comes in and they can qualify with the state as a, as a good actor and the financial stability, and they do this every day, day in and day out with engineers and full support staffs, then yes, we, we may negotiate with them.
Another question came in, it says, why will cities that are not directly impacted by the landfill be compensated by tipping fees?
Well, they won't be compensated by tipping fees, I'm a little bit of a loss of what that is. I think what they're referring to is that, again, we do something a little different. Instead of just the host community getting all the money, they get everything that, that they're by law required to get, the host community, which in this case will be the county. And then, we found it that when we do facilities, we like to put a dollar a ton out there that goes to the cities and it's divided out based on population. And so, you know, and that's been something that's worked in every other facility we've worked on. The cities need the money. They're trying to struggle with having to put in infrastructure to accommodate growth this coming. And, you know, we just, I guess, mainly called, I used to be on city council, I just feel pretty strongly that cities should get a little bit out of this.
Understand.
It's, it's certainly not a requirement and we knew that.
No.
Another written question comes in, it says, how can you make promises about the success of your industrial park when we have other parks that are sitting empty? Infrastructure concerns are the same across the county.
Well, the, some of your industrial parks that are sitting there are empty is because they're not right on the interstate. Secondly, you know, what we, what we do is, you know, we put in the infrastructure that's required and we work very closely with the industrial development group in the county and with the cities, if they have an industrial development group, we work very closely with them to help bring new industry in. They do a very good job at what they do. But then hopefully, you know, we can add another level to that. We have a, or I particularly have a very deep background in industrial development. It's something that I love to do. And, you know, all I can tell you is everywhere we, you know, in Meriwether County, we talked about industrial park, people literally laughed at us, said that would never happen. And it did.
In, in the midst of a really tough economy too, Ernest, might add.
T, there's a question here, it does say, asking both you and Ernest, how many landfills do you own now and how many have you built? Give us exact numbers, please.
Well, Phil, we don't own any right now, okay? The company that I founded years ago called Green Group Holdings, I retired from about two and a half years ago. I was having some health problems and, you know, I retired from being the CEO and president. And I tried being retired for two years and was absolutely miserable. And so, I was very fortunate to get to know T and he was wanting to start a company doing this kind of work. And so, he and I, I said, well, you know, I can't stand being at home any longer. You can go and play, you know, fish so many days. And so, we started this company. And so, this is the first one for this company. We are using the exact same lawyers, engineers, specialists for studies that I've used ever since I started my first business. And they are the very best that you can have anywhere. You know, we do not go cheap. We don't wait until we get zoning to go out and do a lot of these studies. It's all done. And I think people will be very, very impressed when they really see the application and what all has been done. And they have the opportunity to read the findings of the studies and all. I think people will be really surprised at what they see.
There is a question that came in, it says, the success that you're claiming for your Meriwether County park coincided with the arrival of Kia. Their growth would have come with or without your industrial park, so it isn't fair to claim you were the reason the county got the businesses.
No, it is fair to claim that. The county had no industrial park. Okay? We had all this land sitting up next to the interstate. We, long before Kia announced, we, we said we were going to put an industrial park there. And, and it was successful. Yes, Kia came. Yes, we got two businesses, two big businesses out of it. But we also had a company come in Germany there that builds the large, real large roller presses for steel mills from scratch, highly skilled jobs. You know, you had Mondo that came in. They, they don't build for just Kia, they build for General Motors, Ford and everyone, but they're building the, the cutting-edge technology for electronic braking and steering for trucks, cars and, and all kinds of equipment. You know, a lot of people working there, again, high skilled jobs. They're not warehousing jobs, they're not minimum wage jobs. But, yeah, we're very part of that industrial, proud of that industrial park. Who's on the camera? There you go.
Go ahead, if you have a question, go ahead.
Do we have any other questions?
There's one other written question, it just says, so let's be clear, you build landfills and you sell them, question mark?
We built landfills in my former company. When we say build, we permit, get all the permits, we buy the land. In some cases, with our investors, we constructed facilities. In some cases, the companies that come in and actually want to buy the facility before it's constructed. Again, if they do that, they have to abide by all the permits, everything that's in the permits and everything that's in the host agreement.
One other question came in, says, the area surrounding the Meriwether landfill does not appear to have seen any significant growth, even with the office park. So, how is this success being measured? I think they may be talking about their industrial park.
Well, I mean, the success, the success is measured by the number of people that you have working and the wages that they're bringing in. Now, since we own all the property around the industrial park and the interstate's on the one side that we don't own, and we're not going to let residential build there because we want that for commercial and industrial space. So, you know, look at the, look at, look at what, the first quarter of this year, okay? Meriwether County's host agreement, in the first quarter of this year, that was paid to them was $970,000 for a quarter. Now, that's measuring success. And a thousand people having skilled jobs in a community that didn't have skilled jobs, that's success. Now, you know, we can all dance around the Mayfoal and, and try and spin things where, you know, it doesn't look good and all this, but if you just go down there and look for yourself, the truth's there. You don't have to, you don't have to believe us, just go down there. We'll be glad to take you. You can go down there by yourself unannounced, it's going to be the same either way.
That, that, you know, it's, it's coming up on 2:30 and, and we promised everybody we'd stop right at an hour. So, we probably need to stop there, but I, I really think that's a great point that Ernest made. We would love to take some folks down to Meriwether County at any, at any point, at any time. At the end of this, we're going to put our contact information up. So, I'll just close with a couple of final thoughts here. We put together a comprehensive economic development project with long-term benefits for Harrelson County. Our proposal doesn't require the county to give up tax money or spend millions of dollars to bring new jobs. We're providing the investment, paying taxes. We're paying the county a host fee for every ton of municipal solid waste that arrives. It's important to note that Solid Solutions Development has the engineering expertise, the legal experience, the proven track record to build and operate a safe municipal solid waste landfill. Double that with the light, the new light industrial park, Harrelson County, and job growth that improves the quality of life for everybody in the county. And we really, really are excited about that. And we think, we think this is just, this is really going to be a great proposal that we're going to really look forward to presenting to Harrelson County. Phil, if you could put up Ernest and I's contact information.
Hey, T, as you're doing that, I want to mention one other thing before we get off.
Yeah.
These projects are just like voting. If you don't go out and vote, then don't gripe about what the results are. With these projects, we are giving everybody in this community a chance to come and get involved through the, the volunteer, volunteer committee that we have.
Right.
That overlooks everything that's going on with the landfill. We've invited people to come to meetings. We're having these Zoom calls. We welcome the participation. We want you to look deep into what we're doing. And we want to hear if there's something that you don't think you like what you see, tell us. You know, maybe we can make something change, you know, move around a little bit. But if you don't participate, then it's real hard to stand back later on and say, all right, ba, 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 ba. It's just like voting. If you don't vote, then you don't have the right to gripe.
Yeah. Well, you know, look, that's a really, really great point Ernest made. And, and if you look on the screen, it's got both of our cell phone numbers there, so that should show everybody the level of commitment, commitment that we have to be transparent and easy to contact and easy to communicate with. So, we also want to draw as much attention as we possibly can to our website as well. There's going to be a bunch of information up there. We're going to have follow-up answer to the question about the, the trucks and the, the amount of traffic per day. So, really with that, I, I think I just want to close out the meeting. We're going to get a chance to do this again, so if anybody didn't get a chance to ask a question, we're going to hopefully do one of these in a couple more weeks. We look forward to hopefully getting a chance to talk to everybody again then. So, have a great weekend and we'll be in touch.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.